I'm gonna try.
Ready?
Same to you, professionals. Okay.
Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, May 13th, 2019. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 15th, 2019, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 15th, 2019, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 15th, 2019, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times.
Thank you. Eileen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, I got it. Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Massa?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Orozco?
Here.
Mr. San Clemente?
Here.
Mr. Seiya?
Here.
Mr. Moretti?
Present.
Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Troply, my swearing to the professionals, please. Thank you, sir. Approval of Minutes, Regular Meeting, March 11th, 2019. Eligible Voters, Hughes, Massa, Mertens, O'Donnell, Orozco, San Clemente, Seiya, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by? Mr. Massa, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. We have a roll call, please.
Yes, you may. Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Massa?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Regular Meeting, March 18th, 2019. Eligible Voters, Hughes, Massa, Mertens, O'Donnell, San Clemente, Moretti, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion?
Motion by Mr. Moretti?
I'll second that, sir.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Massa?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Regular Meeting, March 25th, 2019. Eligible Voters, Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Orozco, San Clemente, Moretti, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. Mertens, seconded by Mr. Moretti. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Regular Meeting, April 1st, 2019. Eligible Voters, Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Orozco, Moretti, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Hughes?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Any vouchers?
No vouchers.
Any correspondence?
I don't have any correspondence.
Resolutions. Case number BA 1833, Prince of Peace Lutheran Church, Resolution granting minor subdivision with use variance and bulk variance. Eligible Voters, Hughes, Massa, Mertens, O'Donnell, Orozco, San Clemente, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Massa.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. San Clemente. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Massa?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Case number BA 1827, Euro Supply LTD, DBA is Stone Quest LLC. Resolution denying use variance, bulk variance, and preliminary and final site plan. Eligible Voters, Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Orozco, San Clemente, Nansen. Board Members, please note, a yes vote is for denial.
But this is just to memorialize, so they're just memorializing the resolution.
It's a yes vote to this.
Yes.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please? Or, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. San Clemente?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Okay. Applications before the Board, case number BA 1806, LNL Paving Company, Inc. This, there will be no testimony on this application. It will be carried to the zoning board meeting for May 20th, 2019, which will begin at 7:00 PM and will be held at Middle School South, 220 Ramtown Greenville Road, Howell, New Jersey. Mr. Troply, now, will this be re-noticed, or?
It's all been re-noticed, Mr. Chairman. That was the ground rules from the last meeting.
I understand, so this is re-noted?
Answer is yes.
Okay. Expiration, I'm not going to read the whole entire thing. This is a use various preliminary final major site plan. Expiration date, April 30th, 2019. Eligible Voters, Hughes, Massa, Mertens, O'Donnell, Orozco, San Clemente, Moretti, and Nansen. Anyone in the public here for the LNL? Seeing no hands, this will be carried to May 20th, 2019, 7 o'clock, Middle School South, Ramtown.
And just, there is a typo there. That expiration date should be May 31st, 2019. That was granted at the last meeting.
Okay. So the expiration is May 31st. Okay. Next case before the Board, case number BA 1017 SP-A2, Town Homes at Eagle Oaks, Use Variants, amended preliminary and final site plan. Application Town Homes at Eagle Oaks LLC and Winsome Property Holdings LLC is applicant owners seeking a use variance and amended preliminary and final major site plan approval to amend the existing approval to increase the number of townhomes from 28 to 34. Modified proposed townhome building footprint to provide additional parking, additional utility connections for water and sewer, and additional site amenities such as asphalt driveways, concrete service walks, rear patio decks on premises known as Block 218, lots 20.12 through 20.41 Cranberry Road. This application was partially heard March 25th, 2019, when it was carried to May 13th with no further notice. Expiration date, May 31st, 2019. Eligible Voters, Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Orozco, San Clemente, Moretti, Nansen. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, members of the Board and professionals. My name is Bob McGowan. I'm the attorney representing the applicants this evening. As the chairman noted, we were here on March 25th. I made an opening statement. I'm not going to repeat that. I trust everyone remembers it sufficiently well, and I'm sure it'll be reinforced by our action plan here this evening.
Do you mind sitting down because your mic's right in the middle of the table and we need to be able to pick you up clearly?
Very good. Is that better?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're allowed to participate. You just can't, at the time of vote, you just can't vote unless you certify. That's all.
But you can still sit.
But you can still sit, you can still ask your questions.
We have, we have a list of exhibits that were marked in evidence at our last hearing. There are a couple of additions that we would like to note. We've given copies that are being distributed to the Board, to Eileen, and John, will you explain what needs to be added?
By yourself for the record, please.
My name...
Should be on.
My name is John Vincenti.
Right, and you were previously sworn, correct, sir?
Yes.
Qualified as an engineer?
Yes.
Yes, your next number, Bob, is A17?
Right.
However you wish to mark.
John, when identified the page, it's going to be...
So, the Board that's on your left, which is the first exhibit in the files that I gave to Mr. Howard, we're going to mark that as A17.
Excuse me, sir? Could you do me a favor and move all of that to the right? See this one board here? Or is that up on the screen up there?
That's the one that's on the screen.
All right, never mind, never mind.
Yeah, it will be, all the exhibits will be available.
John, if you could just put a description on the record when he's finished, thank you.
So, A17 is a rendered colored rendering of the landscape plan. Sheet number 8 of 15 has a revision date of April 25th, 2019.
Your next marking is A18?
I'm just going to show the Board the exhibits that were previously marked. This is A13.
Okay.
This is a colored rendering of the previously approved site plan. Right here, I've got A12, which has a colored rendering of the architectural plans.
Those were previously marked, correct?
Correct, yes. Also previously marked is A11, an aerial exhibit of the neighborhood. And finally, a new exhibit that I would like to have marked.
And we'll mark that as A18?
18. It's the last, last item in the digital copies that I gave you. That's entitled "The Town Houses at Eagle Oaks." It's an exhibit comparing the new layout with the prior approved layout. It's dated May 13th, 2019.
So for the record, the administrative secretary is handing out reduced copies for the Board to look at. Mr. Chairman, do you want to take a moment or two?
Yes, I would like to.
Okay. You would just hold testimony for a moment.
So, just to reorient the Board, the project is located on Cranberry Road, west of Asbury Avenue, and it joins the Eagle Oaks Golf Club, properties located in the ARE3 Zone. We're dealing with 8.44 acres of land, and the center cul-de-sac that's noted as Remington Court, that already exists, that's paved. The project is partially under construction. The improvements are in.
May I ask you, okay, you gave me the acreage, what was that again?
8.44 acres.
What's the total acreage of the site, though?
Well, the total acreage of the site was 28.8.
28.8.
But that included 20, approximately 20 acres of open space area that has already been dedicated to the township of Howell as open space.
Okay, that's all I wanted on the record.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, by way of orientation, along the bottom, we're calling the new driveway that accesses buildings, Buildings 1 through 3, that's Drive A. That is existing, paved, it's in. The stormwater management facilities along the bottom of the exhibit, those are all in. Building 1 is already constructed. To the north of the exhibit, that's designated as Drive B. Those are designated Buildings 4 through 9. None of those improvements have been constructed, and that's the area where we are proposing and asking the Board to add additional units in those six buildings. Previously approved, those six buildings were containing all three units each. The plan that we have before you now adds a fourth unit, so all of those buildings will have four units, and that's where the additional six units are being proposed.
Building number 3?
Yes.
Was that always a four unit?
Yes. That was always four. Always four units, yes.
So the only two threes that would be left is Buildings 1 and 2, correct?
That's correct, yes. All of the units will have two car garages and two car driveways. When we were last before the Board, the Buildings 4 through 9, the center units, were only one car garages and one car driveways. The plan's been modified to show all two car garages, two car driveways.
That was partially in response to some of the reviews that we've received from the consulting professionals, correct?
That's correct, yes. Generally, I'd like to put up the second exhibit side by side. So on your left is A13. That's a colored rendering of the site plan that was previously approved, and you can see the contrast between the three unit buildings.
Do we need to move back 40?
Just a little. That's more than enough.
That's why I'm the attorney, not the engineer.
Right there's perfect.
Apologize to anyone who's here on this application, can't see, we'll turn it around after we address the Board. Well, I don't have the comparison, that's the problem.
So, the point here, I just wanted to note the difference between the two plans to the Board. On the left was what was previously approved. That's the exhibit that's on the big screen right now, and you can see the units, those units, 4 through 9, only have three homes per building, and the new design has the four with the contrasting, contrasting colors between the units.
But there were nine buildings before, there are nine buildings being proposed now. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. So the difference, the difference...
Mr. Massa? Just a quick question. On Building 6, Unit 18, what are those blue circles? What does that mean?
I just think that might be something in the PDF.
Okay, thank you very much.
There it is.
I thought that was being reserved for the zoning board members.
That's in Building 10. So the goal, what we did here is we worked within the confines of the improvements that were already fully approved. None of the roadways changed, none of the stormwater management facilities changed, the utilities for the main part were unchanged. As it relates to sewer and water, the mains are existing in Remington Court. The only changes for sewer and water were the additional connections for the six extra units. So the infrastructure is essentially the same. The other thing we did is we're cognizant of some of the building separation, the rear yards, the coverage issues, and we tried to achieve a similar layout with similar intensities. One of the things that we did do is the distance between the buildings changed from, generally we had a 50-foot difference between the two buildings, which was the brown footprints, but you'll see a lighter tan on that exhibit, which is a covered roof. The difference, the distance between those units is 40 feet. In the, the new plan, the side yard is approximately, it varies in some of the buildings, it's approximately 35 feet. One of the things we were able to achieve, though, in the new layout, is approximately five more additional feet of rear yard space. So the units basically, while they got, the buildings got wider, they also got less deep. And I did prepare, one of your professionals wanted us to do an overlay. I wasn't really able to do an overlay, but I do have an exhibit, that's the last one that I marked, and that's the last sheet. What I did here, that's marked as A18. So the top half of the exhibit is a blow-up of Buildings 4, 5, and 6, which is...
Wait a second. Let's see if we can get the screen.
Yes. It's in the computer, it's also handed out.
It's your last page of the package I just gave you.
Can you enlarge it, Matt?
So in the, in the package, in the package that you have, in the package that you have, what I've shown, I'm showing here is A18, is the last sheet in the set that starts with the colored rendering? Yes. You got it, man. That's a blow-up of Buildings 4, 5, and 6. The upper half is the newly proposed layout, the lower half is the prior approved layout, and the dimensions are shown by, just example, previously, for Building Number 4, the rear yard on the back left was 62 feet. We're now showing 67 feet. You could also see that the rear of the buildings was straight across in the prior plans. The units jog across the back, so the center units actually have a deeper rear yard area than 67 feet. You can see in the front, between the two buildings, it ranges the distance between 32 feet at the garages, to what we're showing is 36 feet. It was previously 41 feet at the porches and 50 feet at the main body of the buildings. We're able to reduce the building coverage numbers as well as the overall site impervious coverage from what was on the prior plan.
So, John, if I could just make a distinction on that. So with the pervious coverage, with the calculations you provided, you consider the pervious area, the pervious paving area, as 0% impervious coverage? The township ordinance doesn't make any distinction whether or not that is pervious coverage, so for the purposes of the Board, that should be considered impervious coverage. I think also in your calculations, you included the decks being 50% impervious. That was a new ordinance introduced effective October 29th, 2018. This application was filed before that, so as far as this Board's concerned, those are 100% impervious. Now, they can make that distinction to the Board, and you can recognize that, but as far as this Board's considered right now for this application, I think we need to say it's 100% impervious. What I will say, in our review of the impervious coverage, they were previously granted approvals for 33%. Based on our calculations, I think they're at, we have it in our letter, 38 point...
38.4.
38, 35.84%, sorry. I think, based on our review of the prior reviews and everything like that, there might have been some calculation error where, at one point, they included that pervious area as 0% impervious, so the Board may have granted them a variance for impervious coverage, not considering that. But as far as their proposed site layout, I don't think it varies from what was previously proposed as far as the square footage of the different paving areas. So I just want to make that distinction for the Board. Although it's a higher number, it doesn't appear to vary from the prior approvals, you know, significantly.
So if, what we did is we compared the prior engineer's approved site plan and compared it versus the way Charles indicated it should be compared. The prior, the previous approval was at 38.4% total impervious. The current layout is at 35.8%. So, for whatever reason, the prior plans listed 33% as the lot coverage. I think we both acknowledged that that was not correct. So, we've gone from 38.4 to 35.8 where we are today with this plan. The building coverage is down to 16.9%, which again is a reduction from what was previously approved.
So although the coverage numbers is calculated by Charles, it's gone up, it's only because the calculation changed. In fact, the actual ground coverage has gone down from what was previously approved.
Comparing the two plans, what was on the impervious surfaces that was on the approved, the first plan versus this, it's a reduction, yes.
Yeah, we noted that in our prior review letter, that there appeared to be a discrepancy in the calculation. I wouldn't take any objection to what Mr. Vincenti has put on the record.
Thank you. So really, that just gives the Board a broad overview of where we are, where we were and where we are, what we're proposing. Uh, with respect to stormwater management, we, we resubmitted those, we, we reran those numbers, um, originally submitted that. Um, I double-checked the, uh, impervious coverage numbers in that. That, uh, calculation is correct, we did not have to resub- submit that. So it's, it's based on the larger impervious surfaces.
Charles?
I would say for the board's clarity, we agree some concerns with the storm management report. You know, in some areas, it seemed to still reference twenty-eight units, some areas it still seemed to reference thirty-four units. I would request that the applicant submit a revised stormwater management report, everything based on thirty-four units. I'm not refuting that they don't have all that already calculated in there for impervious area. I think just for a matter of the board's record, everything needs to say thirty-four townhouse units. And then, uh, you know, the coverages in the report need to match what's shown on the plans.
And, and, and that'll be done, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, on the outside units on each of these buildings now, they seem to be a little longer than the inside units. For example, on building six, twenty-four and eighteen stretch out further. And building and, uh, was it twenty-two and twenty are cut, are further in, they're not even across. So that gives more impervious, uh, coverage or what's, why, is two of these units smaller in each of these buildings now?
Yes, the end, the end units are larger square footage, the interior, interior buildings are smaller square footage.
You did say that, okay, I just wanted to make sure. And so that does help with the pervious too?
The, the building coverage, the, the, the square footage of the building area has been reduced. The, the, the buildings have, have been, you know, reshaped and, and it, it results in a smaller footprint.
And John, have you eliminated any decks or paver patios from any of the rears of these buildings?
We, uh, what the architect has done is, is consistently, uh, uh, across the back of buildings four through nine, he's going with wooden decks because of the grade, the grade, uh, drops off. On buildings one and two, those are shown as, uh, paver patios. Building number three is going to also be decks similar to buildings four through nine. And that's again, uh, consistent with the revised architectures that were submitted. And, uh, that's all, uh, been resolved, uh, on the current site plan.
And then John, I think just a point for the board to record is the prior plans you submitted to, for the last hearing, you had a continuous deck and paper patios along the back of each of those buildings, right?
That's correct.
And now you've, you know, eliminated a good portion of that where it's only, uh, you know, one set of decks for units, what, three through nine? And then one set of patios for units in the buildings one through three?
One through two, yes, that, that, that's correct. What that also does, it gives, it gives more green space, uh, in the rear yard areas.
The decks are the same level as the first floor, first living floor?
Yes.
On these units?
Yes.
Just for clarity, each of the units in, in the proposed buildings now are smaller than they were before, is that true?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, but the end units are larger than the center units?
Correct, yes. So I, I think that, that kind of just, uh, gives the board, um, a brief summary of where we are. What I'd like to do is, is go through, um, portions of the, um, the engineer's letter and then the planner's letter. The most recent, uh, letter that we got from T and M Associates is revised May tenth. I really just want to, uh, highlight, um, a, a, a number of items, um, starting actually on, on sheet five. And, 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 and just in a general comment with respect to both the planners and the, and the, and, and the engineers' letters, our, our goal is to, to revise the plans, to comply with, with generally the comments. So if there's additional, uh, changes or, or clarifications to the plans to address the comments in the letter, our intent would be to do that. But I, I believe, um, for the most part, the plans are really not going to change significantly. And what you see before you is, is, uh, what you're gonna get.
We're on sheet five.
Excuse me?
Sheet five?
Sheet five, yes. So at the bottom, uh, there's, uh, item number five, uh, that deals with, uh, parking. Uh, the total number of parking spaces, um, that we're proposing is one hundred and forty-nine total. That includes thirty onsite visitor parking spaces in, uh, five areas, uh, distributed through the, through the site. Each one of them will, will have six parking spaces. In addition to that, uh, each unit will have a two-car garage and a two, uh, car-wide driveway. The residential site improvement standards only allow us to take credit for three and a half parking spaces. So when we do the math, three and a half parking spaces at the number of thirty-four units, I'm getting credit for a hundred and nineteen spaces plus the thirty visitor. And that's how we come up with a hundred and forty-nine parking spaces. The number of required parking spaces is considerably less than the one forty-nine. We're only required to have eighty-two. So we, uh, exceed, uh, what's, what's required. We, we are, um, uh, proposing four point four spaces per unit when only two point four are required.
Charles?
Yeah, John, so, um, just, uh, distinction. If you were to, I think one of the questions that the traffic safety officer, um, brought up in their memo was, uh, some of the other developments in the town, they've been having an issue with these townhomes where people are using the garages for storage and not actual parking. And then people are parking in the driveway aisles. Uh, would the applicant have any objection to striping all the la- uh, aisles as fire lanes, closing signage?
No objections at all.
Would they have any objection to, uh, enacting Title Thirty-nine?
Uh, no objection at all.
Okay, and then I, another distinction to make too is, so you're providing a hundred and forty-nine. If there were a case where every single garage in this development were packed with storage and you couldn't park a vehicle in there, do you have any idea on how many actual parking spaces you would have in that?
Well, I'd, I'd have the two driveways available for each.
Okay.
Uh, so that's, um, that's, uh, six, sixty-eight, and I'd have the thirty visitor. And then there-
So ninety-eight parking spaces versus the eighty-two required?
Yes.
Okay, so even if those garages were full, you'd still have an excess of the, of the parking?
Yes. And I don't think there's any pro- prohibition of, of parking, uh, along one side of, uh, Remi- Remington.
I don't think it's Remington Court that the comment was referenced to, it was the internal driveway aisles to the different townhouses.
Yes, so, so in theory, someone can, can park on, on Remington and you'd, you'd also have a, a, a slightly larger number.
Yeah, but it's, I'm just saying as far as the, the, no parking fire lane, I think that would only be subject to the drive aisles.
Drive A and B, yes.
But, but Remington Court does provide additional parallels, uh, parking spaces for the development, is that correct?
Yes. So, uh, continuing on, item six and seven, do, both deal with, with the building height. The, uh, maximum building height is, is thirty-five feet, uh, uh, two and a half stories. All of our buildings are less than thirty-five feet, they're going to be two stories only. There's no living space above that, uh, that second level. There will be basements, uh, in all of the, all of the units. Uh, there was a question as to, um, what's the exact building height? Each height is different because it's a function of grade. So what I did is I, I, I looked at what I thought was the worst-case scenario, building number seven. That's one of the, uh, buildings that has a walkout basement. And I calculated, um, the way your ordinance requires us to calculate, that that building height calculates to approximately thirty point seven-five feet. So it's again considerably less than the thirty-five, thirty-five feet. So all the building heights will conform. Item number eight deals, uh, with the subject of, of, uh, building coverage. We'll update the plans to indicate the thirty-five point eight percent. Uh, previous, previously the plans actually showed thirty-eight point four percent.
Which, which comment was it?
That's item number eight on page six.
Six, okay. Well, one of the things that, uh, I, I know Charlie addressed it, and that is that the ordinance says that porous pavement still counts as impervious pavement. But I would ask the board to take note of the fact that it is porous pavement. It does in fact allow water to seep through it and so forth. So while the ordinance says that, and while the DEP would agree, as I understand it, that it is impervious coverage, in fact, it's designed to be able to allow the water to flow through and so forth.
And I, while I respect, uh, the comment Mr. McGowan made, I would also make a point to the board that any stormwater management system is only as good as how you maintain it. Once sediment builds up in the pavement section, sand and stuff like that gets clogged, uh, it doesn't always work as it was once designed. So I think for the board's consideration, it's impervious coverage.
And just to add on to that, when we were redoing our ordinances and looking at impervious coverage, it came up whether we wanted to count that as a different percentage. And the answer was no, uh, maintenance on them is usually not good, and after a few years they become impervious. So we didn't give a discount for porous pavement.
If I may ask a question, would the, uh, would there be an objection then if we simply went to impervious coverage?
Uh, I think I need that to, to meet the recharge requirement, stormwater.
Alrighty, thank you.
Items nine and ten, I think we covered that deals with the rear decks and patios. Item number eleven on page seven, uh, deals with the water and sewer. Uh, and again, I, uh, really the only changes made are the additional six connections for water and sewer for the units.
Now, on that, do you have to file for new approvals to make those connections?
Just to the local utility department, not to DEP.
Okay.
And then I would just know, obviously, they're gonna be ripping up portions of Remington Court for those, uh, Remington Court for those new, uh, sections. You're gonna be required to reconstruct the pavement section in accordance with, uh, the approved plans.
It's already bonded, yes.
Hang on, Charles, uh, isn't this by homeowners association? Or is that a dedicated?
No, so it was previously, and then they reverted it back to, it's, it's owned by the HOA, so.
Okay.
Item number-
And there, there's a bond for that?
Uh, I wouldn't be able to speak on the bond, I would have to be something that would be asked to the township engineering department for that, right?
The bonds have, have already been posted, yes.
For, for Remington Court?
Yes, for the utilities in Remington Court, yes.
Originally, I mean, that-
Oh, I know that.
So yes, those bonds were already posted.
Okay, but, okay, I, I don't even want to get into it, okay, go ahead.
Item number twelve, uh, is the subject of, of grading, and, and that basically is, uh, just indicating that for the most part, the grading has not changed. The only changes that were made were close, uh, to the, to the units, the driveway, uh, orientation. But the, the, the grading configuration and the drainage configuration on the site is unchanged from the original design. Uh, item number thirteen, uh, is in, is the, uh, item of the storm report. Uh, the, the text of the body needs to be, uh, updated to, uh, correctly indicate thirty-four units. But the calculations are all based on the thirty-four units.
Why were the calculations based on thirty-four units if only twenty-eight were approved before?
Because we redid them based on thirty-four and, and, and the, the body of the report is, is a typo indicating the twenty-eight units as opposed to the thirty-four.
Well, and the applicant had pre- when it originally presented the plans for twenty-eight, there wasn't a proposing thirty-four units.
But that was a different report.
That was a different report, okay.
That was a different report. We up, we, we prepared a brand-new report for this application.
Alright, so that's correct.
Item number fourteen, um, uh, we connected all of the roof leaders, that was a requirement, uh, that's been done. And number fifteen deals with, uh, signage. So the signage is shown on the, uh, landscape plan, which is exhibit A seventeen. On the right-hand side, we have details of the four signs. There are, three of them are temporary associated with, um, with sales. We have at the bottom a sales office sign, the model name sign, and an informational sign, it's like a sales sign, uh, for, for information. The main entry sign is, uh, located at the right-hand corner. Uh, the concern is right now where it's shown is technically on town open space property. We're going to relocate that back into our site, put it onto our property. That will eliminate the need for us to, uh, obtain a variance of the four signs. That's the only sign that will be permanent. Once, uh, sales are completed, the first three signs that I indicated will be removed from the site.
And by moving it back to our property, it will eliminate the need for needsmen, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
John?
We did look. The issue that I have, to be perfectly honest, is, and it's not a big issue, it's something that we can do later on. But those signs that you have on that plan, they're not to scale. It says not to scale, not to scale, not to scale, so, uh, you know, right, it says NTS, that means not to scale. So, um, I would need like an updated sign plan, uh, if the board were to act affirmatively. I have no issue with the sign proposed, I would just like a, an updated sign plan that shows exactly where it is. And, and I, I don't know why it says not to scale, John, quite honestly, because you have dimensions on there, so I'm questioning why it says that.
I'll fix that.
Okay, so I just need that to be fixed.
All, all the dimensions are there?
Right, I agree, so I just, I just, it just was a little-
Fuzzy.
Yes.
But John, just with the signs, the only permanent one is gonna be located at, uh, was that the northwest corner? Or southwest corner of the intersection there?
It's, uh, as you're coming-
The main entry sign, right, that's what you're talking about?
Yes, on the right, as you're coming in on the right.
So the rest of them will lea- will go away once the units are sold?
Yes.
So they're temporary signs, so the one that we're worried about is the one that's main entry. I have no issue with it, I just want that cleaned up on the plans.
Uh, we just want, that's fine, and we're gonna move it off the town property, so we just have to deal with that.
That's, yeah, yes, exactly.
Okay, um, item number sixteen was a matter of clarification, there's no lighting being proposed on the, uh, in the rear yard areas. Item number seventeen, again-
Uh, now whether, will each unit have a porch light?
Yes, yes. And that was summarized in, in our, our, our submission, resubmission letter, indicating that.
And Mr. Chairman, I don't know that's something that we would typically look at, I think that would be, uh, subject to building code, uh, you know, approvals for that. Matt, you can probably chime in on that better than me.
It's ge- it's generally like a sixty watt residential-
No, I, I understand that, but I, I, I've just, none of the buildings are gonna have what, what I would, pedestrians, uh, like, correct?
No, no, but there's, there will be, um, lighting in all the parking areas.
Okay, what about in between the houses?
In between the houses, no.
So basically from the garage back?
I mean, windows, right, on those façades, so like if someone has an interior light on, the light will spill into that little interior lawn area, but there's no exterior building mounted lights at that location.
That's what I'm questioning.
Well, there are, there are side porch entries, is that correct?
The porch will have a light.
So to the extent that there's a porch entry, there'll be a light.
Be a porch light, yes.
But that, that won't be security lighting, correct?
That's correct, yes. Item number eighteen, um, indicates that, uh, the plans are subject to review by the board certified tree expert. We've worked with Shari, uh, on this plan and the prior approved plan. I think we've got pretty much everything covered, I have not gotten a new letter back from her, but we will comply with, uh, um, her reasonable requests.
She, she did indicate to me, Mr. Chair, that they have completed all the items that she had concerns with. And that you guys were good to go with her.
Okay.
Item number nineteen is just a reminder that we have to comply with all the prior conditions and, and, uh, of, of the prior resolution as well as any new resolution. And we agreed to that. Item number twenty is information, uh, of fact indicating that Remington Court has already been vacated, and it's now owned by the developer and not the township. Items number twenty-one and twenty-two, uh, deal with, uh, the lighting plan that was submitted. Now, Shari, Shari issued an administrative approval of, of a lighting plan. Her prior report asked us to submit that, we did. That was what was, what she approved. There's two comments here with respect to some areas of lighting that are a little extensive, and some that are a little light. Um, our intent is to go back to that plan, tweak it, modify it properly, so that there's no variances associated with that. And we'll do that and work with, uh, both, uh, your engineer and Shari to make sure that the plan meets snuff.
So John, I, I just think it would be in your best interest right now, uh, where it's a common issue with the LED lighting, it's hard to hit the point-five maximum averages with the foot candles. You do have a maximum average of two point one- foot candles. You do have a maximum average of 2.11, I think, from the plans. I think the board, you know, you should approach them as trying to get a variance for that, just for matters of clarity. I don't know that you're going to be able to provide, you know, 50 different lights to get that minimum. It's not something uncommon for the board to consider. I think the township is looking at revising ordinance in regards to that, but I think the board should consider that for a variance, as far as-
So, you, the minimum or the maximum?
It's, so, the maximum average is .5 foot candles, you're proposing 2.11 foot candles.
That's a big difference.
That's, Matt, you can probably speak to that, too. We've had a lot of applications, and the board has granted variances for that, it's, it's not uncommon.
It's not, it's not as bad as you're saying.
I, I know that.
The point, the .3 is extremely low.
It's in the works, that we're going to try and fix that ordinance, it's just, we're not there yet, but that will be changing within the next year.
Do you have any problems issuing a variance for the 2.11?
I mean, they could provide more lights and try to get the average down, you know, or provide a lower intensity LED light. The location of the lights that they're showing doesn't appear to differ dramatically from what was previously approved. I think it's just a change in the LED lighting, you know, from the, you know, previous fluorescent or incandescent type lights, so.
Are these down-facing fixtures?
John, can you testify to that?
They're, they're down, yes.
Down-facing?
Down-facing, yes.
What about, will any of this lighting be going into the windows of the townhomes?
Well, I would say the, the, the level of the fixture would be pretty close to the windows. It won't be directed into the windows, everything is directed down, but if you were to look at the second-floor bedroom window, you would, you would see the light source. I think that's, that's pretty typical.
Well, are you going to have any spillage into the, those windows, though?
I don't believe so, no, because they're far, you know, the, the fixtures are far enough away, and everything's directed down toward, to the pavement, so there wouldn't be, you know, like, like a spotlight shining into someone's window, but you'll see the light source, just like you see the, this light source here.
Correct.
So, John, any light fixtures, so on the north side of the Drive B, could those be provided with house shields, so you don't have any light facing? And then the same thing for Drive A on the bottom, anything on the south side to be provided with house shields?
Yes.
Okay. And, and then there will also be residential lighting on the garages for some of these driveways, too, to provide additional light for the parking areas?
Yes.
But that, that's the homeowner's deal, correct?
That's the homeowner's.
Okay. Okay, so, Charles, are we going to ascertain a variance for the 2.11? Would that be your recommendation?
Yes, I think it would be good for the board to consider at this, this point. I think even with LED lights, even if they proposed 60 of them, you're still going to have an issue with hitting that .5 maximum average. I think they can work to revise the plans, like you said, with the house shields, but I think the board should consider it for the variance at this point.
Section C of the, of the report starts on page eight, continues on, on page nine. In general, we'll comply with all, all of those requests, C1 through 8. And then, summarizing on the left, on sheet 11, conditions in the outside agency approvals, we will comply with all seven of those items, although I think the first two have really been taken care of already.
Okay, and that's number seven?
One, one and two have been taken care of?
Correct.
So, items three through seven need to be addressed.
Well, number three is, we, we're going to move the sign so we don't require an easement-
Right.
Having to do with the sign. Number four, I'll just inform the board that the master deed that's been filed addresses the fact that there is no subletting of any of the units, so that has been addressed, and that's been submitted to, you know, Tom Savino, and it's part of the review of compliance for the last approval.
Then going through the planner's review letter of May 8th, I think, again, just a blanket statement, we're, we don't take any objection to any of the items in the report. There, there are a lot of carryover items between the two reports, I tried to hit them in my direct testimony.
Mr. Chair, if I could just-
Yes.
So, basically, I think Mr. Vincenti covered all the outside questions that I had. The only thing that I would ask, and this is really more towards Mr. McGowan, is we're just asking for a little bit more detail on the architecturals, if the board were to act affirmatively on the application. We have certain building renderings architecturally, and we would just like to see buildings two and four through nine, because there's selective renderings that we've seen. We would just like to see them, and that would be something that we'd be perfectly fine handling as, as a resolution compliance item, if you were to act affirmatively on the application.
Do you have any issues with that?
No.
No issues whatsoever.
That's really the only issues that I would have for Mr. Vincenti, I think he covered everything else in my letter.
And I, I think you may have four through nine already, so it's-
Maybe, we could just communicate-
Probably just building two, but not a problem.
We can communicate afterward, if the board is going to act affirmatively, we can resolve that after the fact. It's nothing that would hold up any action by the board.
And while I would like to accept that and move on, I, I just want to make sure, are we satisfied as far as the parking issue is of the-
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And with, with that, I, I don't think you have anything else.
The only other item, and I just raised it, and we can address it at the end, and that is whether we're looking for a D1 or a D2 variance. We're certainly looking for a D5. The question is, are we looking for a D1, which is a use variance, or a D2, which is an expansion of a non-conforming use? And we can let-
I mean, I don't want to argue you out of going for a D1, because that's a heavier burden, but I do think that you already received a variance approval for this use at this location at 28 units, and this is an expansion, which is a lower burden. So, my recommendation is that it's a D2 expansion, but if he wants to put proofs on for a D1, which is a heavier burden, have at it.
Well, you know, and-
I'm not looking to make our job harder, I'm just making sure we do the right thing.
I want to address Mr. McGowan. I did receive an email from you this afternoon, I, I looked at it, I read it. To me, this has always been an expansion, the site has been subject to a use variance initially, since 2015, it's been partially constructed. I see this as an expansion, as a D2, and I concur with the planner.
And I concur with that at this point. I raised the issue to make sure it was clarified. Thank you.
Well, the only other issue that I would have is if you were going for D1, do you have a planner that's going to testify?
Oh, we, oh, yes.
Okay, that's-
As much as Christine enjoys being here.
You're always ready, Christine, we know that. But, okay, okay.
Thank you.
I have nothing further, so, there's questions?
Questions from the board of the engineer. Professionals, so?
No, sir.
May move forward.
With that, we'd like to call for our planner, who is here.
And Christine, I believe you were previously sworn, according to my notes.
I'll, I'll trust you to remember, it's like it's sworn in a lot, so.
Ron, Ron, let's go ahead and re-swear.
Yeah.
That way we know it's the right case here.
I have no problem with that.
Exactly.
Swear the testimony you gave this evening, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I've got it.
Yes, I do.
State your name for the record.
It's Christine Nazaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O, C-O-A-F-Z-N-F-R-A-N-K-O-N-E.
If you'd just give the board a brief benefit of your credentials.
Yes.
You need to make a recording.
I do, right, like I press a button.
You need to have a recording, just prepare for that.
That would be helpful. So, good evening, Chairman, and members of the board, I've testified here in Howell, and in excess of over 400 boards throughout the state of New Jersey. My license is current and valid, and I have a master's degree in city and regional planning, also an instructor for the Rutgers Center for Government Services, where I teach planning and zoning courses, I teach at Monmouth University.
We accept your credentials, Christine.
This is a very straightforward application for the board this evening. I think if you were to put up the two boards, I think one of them was A12 in evidence, which was the previous approved site plan, and the application that's before you tonight, you would have a really hard time, at a quick glance, or even after a pretty in-depth glance, of telling the two apart, because we're really not changing very much. What you see before you is the six buildings on the, the top of the plan, we're essentially adding one additional unit in each unit, and I would be wondering if I were sitting up on the board, well, why are you doing this? What is, what is the motivation for this? And 2,300 square feet is what the prior footprint was of the proposed units. That is an enormous townhome unit, and we are really just having a very hard time in getting this project absorbed by the market at 2,300 square feet for the base floor plan for the townhome. So, what we did was, we tried to work in, essentially in the confines of what was previously approved by this board. The buildings have gotten a little bit wider, but a little bit less deep. So, what that does is, it actually gives you a greater usable rear yard area, which I think there's a benefit to from a planning point of view, and it makes the side yard separations, while still conforming with what your ordinance would recognize, it makes them a little smaller. So, the D2 expansion here is really just to add one additional unit into each of those six buildings that are on the top of the plan. So, the excess that we're talking about here, or the impact, is the addition of one additional per unit, and a plan that's going to look pretty much the same as it did last time. As you saw, what are, I think, the most significant plans from the plan, that, one of the most significant changes from the plan that we had before you last month is that now all of the units are going to have two-car garages. So, where 2.4 spaces are required, we have 4.4 parking spaces. So, of course, in a community like this, parking is always, you know, is always a concern, so I think we more than meet it here. So, from a planning point of view, this is really, I think, a very easy lift. This project is particularly suited for these additional six units. You heard Mr. Vincenti talk earlier that the entirety of this eight-plus-or-minus acres, that's the subject of these nine buildings and the 34 units, is surrounded by almost-
18 acres?
17.76 acres in open space, thank you. So, we're surrounded, and we're sort of cocooned and insulated by this open space, so the addition of the additional six units is de minimis, it's not going to have an overburden, so we're not increasing the, the coverages, we're not, we're actually decreasing the building coverage. While I see that there was some technical, technical differences in the way that impervious coverage calculated, I think what you can be guided by as a board is that the actual number of square footage of coverage, so, forget about how you calculated it last time, and how you calculated it this time, the actual square footage of coverage is decreasing in conjunction with this. So, even though we're asking for six additional units, we're not asking you for one single square foot more of impervious coverage to accomplish it. So, I think the board can certainly conclude that this is an appropriate population density, which is criteria E of the land use law. When you factor in that 17.76 square feet of open spa, or 17-point square feet, 17.76 acres of open spaces around this, you get, we're down to a density of 1.29 units to the acre, which is, is a very low density, so I see no reason why the board cannot rely on criteria E. I think the board could also rely on criteria G, which talks about sufficient space in appropriate locations. As you heard from Mr. Vincenti earlier this evening, the improvements are already in, the road is in, the three buildings on the bottom of the plan are constructed or under construction. So, really, this is a particularly suitable site, and criteria G, sufficient space in appropriate locations of the land use law, would be advanced. And when you talk about the negative criteria, or the, the burden of approving the negative criteria, the land use law asks you to look at substantial detriment, not is there any detriment whatsoever, but is the detriment substantial? And when you have a plan that is so closely conforming to the site plan that you previously approved, it's very difficult to find substantial detriments to this area when we're not increasing the coverages, we're not increasing the, any stormwater management, we're not taking away from the open space. There's really nothing that we're doing to change how this plan was going to be absorbed into the neighborhood, except that we're making it easier to be absorbed, and that these are marketable units, which is, of course, consistent with your master plan, which talks about providing a range of housing opportunities in the township, and also to provide for residential densities and lot sizes that do not exceed the capabilities and limitations and the naturals, of the natural systems, and of the available infrastructure. And that's a relevant goal from your most recent 2017 master plan. So, taken together, I see a substantial lack of adverse impacts. I see criteria E and criteria G of the land use law being advanced by this. I think this fact that there are actually improvements to the total overall area of impervious coverage, and advancement of master plan goals, I think these six units can be easily absorbed into the site plan that was previously contemplated for this area with a lack of negative impacts, and certainly a lack of substantial negative impacts.
Christine, can, can you address what's, to the top of the, top of the chart there? You have the, the tree line, what's above the tree line, do you know?
Open space.
Well, the, the open space is the, excuse me, the township's, beyond the township open space, what, what's next to that, do you know?
The golf course?
The golf course.
Am I just a trick question?
Well, the point is, there's a tremendous amount, not only do you have the 18 acres of open space that was dedicated to the town, but next to that, now you have the, the holes from Igleo's golf course that come across there, is that correct?
You do, and I believe our homeowners, we have an arrangement with that golf course, where these homeowners can be members there, they can utilize that open space, so there's definitely a synergy between those two uses.
Jennifer?
I do not disagree with the testimony. I think the inclusion of two-car garages in each of those units, the big issue that I typically see in townhouse communities is, the RSIS allows you to use the garage as a parking space, and it, usually it's a one-car garage, and virtually nobody uses that one-car garage for parking of a vehicle, because there's usually a lack of storage in these units, and they use the, the garage as storage, which then puts the one car in the driveway, and the other car, who knows where. So, the fact that each of these units have two-car garages, but also two-car driveways, plus the abundance of additional parking throughout, plus the availability of parking on Remington Court, assuades that, that concern, as far as I'm concerned. We have a lot of these townhouse communities locally here in town, and they do not provide this amount of parking, and those that do not are, have been a, a problem. So, that, to me, it was my first concern, so that they've taken care of. Secondly, you know, they're adding these six units, as was testified, in the existing buildings, as was previously approved, and they're reducing the coverage. Regardless of how we've calculated the coverage in the past, and I agree with Charlie, that it probably was not calculated correctly, but it is a reduction overall, even, you know, if it was, if we did the, the calculation correctly on the previously approved plan, this is a reduction in coverage. So, between the adequacy of the parking and the reduction of coverage, and not adding an additional building, I think, you know, as far as the D2 criteria is concerned, the, the statute requires us to say, can the site accommodate the increase? The increase is six units, they're, they're accommodating in the existing buildings, they have adequate parking, they're reducing the coverage, so in my opinion, that they've met their burden.
My, my only question, I'm just going back to the architectural drawings-
Sure.
On, on the, the actual two-car garages, you know, the, the one-end unit is 19-foot wide. How wide of a garage?
I mean, typically, you'd want six, you'd want 20 feet, I mean, 10 and 10, but, you know, this is not a parking space at a shopping center, where you may be there once, this is someone's home, so if it's a foot less, you're going to find that people figure out how to navigate that, and I will venture to say, half that garage is going to be full of crap. So, this one side is going to be full of storage, the other side's probably going to house a car, even still, that still gives them three parking spaces between the one, if they use the garage as one spot, plus the two in the driveway, I still think that there's adequate parking.
Any questions from the board?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you, oh, do I have to introduce the public now, or do that answer?
Well, we're gonna-
Right. I mean, that, that concludes our presentation, other than for responding to anything else that may come up.
Okay, is there any further from the board professionals?
No, sir.
Nope.
Any further from the board? I have a motion to open the public.
Make a motion to open the pub?
Motion by Mr. Moretti. Second by Mr. Rusko, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
All opposed? Anyone in the public wish to come forward, may, ask question or make a comment in regards to this application? I can't see behind the boards.
Well, I'll take that though.
No? No one? Can I have a motion to close?
Make a motion to close?
Motion by Mr. Moretti.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Donnell, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Do you like to make a summation?
I, I think, I think the board has heard from us, uh, over, over the years, a number of times, I, I, I think the board fully understands the application. I think it's been well explained, uh, that, you know, what we're doing here is reducing coverage, we've expanded parking. Uh, I can represent to the board that aside from the two car garages, each of these units is going to have a basement, uh, which is going to provide additional storage, even though most of the basements on the western side or the top of the chart are in fact going to be walkout basements, nonetheless, they're substantial in size and it's going to have, you know, your utility rooms and your storage down there. Um, so I, I think as Jennifer summed it up, uh, and as Christine presented it to the board, I think this is actually an improved situation for what was previously approved and we would hope that you would approve it. Thank you.
Any further from the professionals?
No, sir.
Okay, what's pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this application and I agree with planner Christine Cuffone and I agree with all our professionals that this application would be inherently beneficial. And, um, also everything documents should be supplied to our professionals. We should grant them the D2 variance. And I wasn't sure, do they need a D5 too?
Yes.
Yes.
So they need the D2 and a D5. And so my motion is to approve.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, cause I-
Second on Mr. Merton?
I think it's a much improved plan. The presentation was good and I appreciate you taking the advice of our professionals, so.
We appreciate the advice. Thank you.
Okay, have a motion, second? Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Oroco?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Based on all testimony that's been placed on the record, all issues that were agreed upon between the applicant and our board professionals, also as far as architectural dealings with, with Jennifer's office, my vote is yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Members of the board, thank you, professionals, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the board's- Board's gonna take a 10-minute recess. He was, here he is.
The zoning board will now reconvene.
Okay, next case before the board, case number BA 1834, Robert and Shannon Barklow. Use variance for a second story garage apartment in a bulk variance for pole barn. Application, Robert and Shannon Barklow is applicant and Sue and Robert Barklow as owner seeking use variance approval to legalize a second floor garage apartment used in the site and bulk variance approval for construct a 1500 and 60 square foot pole barn on the eastern portion of premises known as block 156, lot 18, 134 West Farms Road. Expiration date, May 14th, 2019. Welcome.
Good evening, how you doing?
Good, sir.
Uh, my name's Robert Barklow, I'm the applicant for the application. I started this process-
Hang on a second.
Oops, sorry.
Need to swear in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I do, James Higgins.
Sorry. Again, my name is Robert Barklow, I'm the applicant for the application. In the process of building, going for building permit for the pole barn, uh, they found the apartment that was built 22 years ago, my parents' house. My parents have been resident of how for 50 years and we converted upstairs into a one-bedroom apartment and the house is one bedroom, uh, one-bedroom house. Family friend's been living in there since 1997 and he still lives in the apartment and he's responsible for the utilities. The purpose of the pole barn is to provide a space for my RV and my parents' tractor and a couple of other tractors that we have. And I have a picture of the Google Maps showing where I want to put the building at and where everything's at.
Their photos? Four, one, two, three, four?
More photographs of what, Mr. Barklow?
Of 134 West Farms Road.
And what does it take, what kind of shots?
Uh, aerial.
Aerials?
Aerials, yeah. Uh, actually two aerials, uh, one aerial and three regular.
And you took them, right?
Yes. Absolutely.
Mr. Barklow?
Yes.
Okay, how long has your parents owned the property or do you own the property?
My parents have owned it since, uh, 53 years, 54 years?
So we're going back to the 50s?
Yes, uh, 60s, excuse me.
60s?
Yeah, 66, I think they bought it actually.
And the, the residential structure that's on there, that's a one-bedroom, you said?
Yes.
How long has that been there approximately?
Oh, man. 100 years? How long's that? 90 years.
90 years?
Yeah.
How, how long has your parents occupied that, 60 years?
Yeah, 66, they moved in.
Okay. Okay, now as far as the apartment above the garage, how long has that been an apartment?
Uh, 95, I built it.
95 or 97?
95.
1995?
Yes.
And that's been a rental apartment?
Since 97. What happened was I built the apartment to live in and my grandfather lives next door and when he passed away, I bought the house from the estate, my mom and aunt and uncle, and I moved in there. And then my dad's friend needed a place to live and he's moved in and never left.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Masa.
Do you have separate utilities on that apartment?
Yes.
Do you have anything, like any kind of utility bills or anything to show the board that the apartment has been there for years and years and years?
Uh, I didn't think to bring it, no.
But you have documentation?
I'm sure I can find something, yes.
Well, i- if you've got separate utilities, if it's got its own utilities?
Yes.
You have, it's got its own light, uh, electric meter?
Yes.
Bring us a bill for that.
Right.
That, that's what we need.
Okay.
And, you know, the, the, as old, far back as you can go to get a bill.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I, I'm sure the building-
They would not necessarily give you a separate meter. You know, I'm familiar with this.
Okay.
Evidently, there's some legitimacy to this apartment because the utility, Jersey Central, wouldn't have given you a cut sheet on it.
Yes.
Not necessarily. Can't even know what the garage was used for.
Well, I'm talking about the apartment.
I, even with the apartment, it could have been for the garage initially.
I have my own personal experience with it.
Well, I, I do too, I have a lot with these.
Yeah.
If you're a former, a former can get one for each one of his buildings that he has out back. It, it, it doesn't matter to that.
My experience is residential.
Yeah. Okay. The, uh... So 1997, okay, what, what you need to do is go back to JC P&amp;L or something, get, you know, uh, as far back as you can showing-
Okay.
If it was. And then what would even be better is if it's in somebody else's name.
Okay.
If, if somebody was paying their own utility bill?
Yeah.
That, that would be even better.
Okay. I will ask Eladio to get it, see how far he can go back.
Okay. Okay, Jennifer?
I, I mean, I really don't have any questions about the garage apartment because it has been there, I know it's been there for a very long period of time, so I could submit that creates no negative impact, it has been there for quite some time.
Okay.
Um, I actually have more questions and concerns about the pole barn.
Pole barn, yes.
So I will put a pin in my comments and wait until that-
Okay.
Moment.
Charles?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question on, um, it looks like there's a second story deck or porch for the garage apartment, is that correct? Um, there's no stairs outside or anything like that?
Not outside, but, uh, they're inside on the back of the garage.
Okay.
It has its own entryway.
It's internal inside the garage, though, right?
Yes.
Okay. So the distinction I would just make is, um, if they are, if the board is going to grant a use variance for the garage apartment, I think that would be considered part of a second principle structure. Um, they should grant relief, you know, for the variance for that. It's, I think, setback 44.5 feet. I think they, you know, that should be dimensioned on the plan and the board should just be clear that they're granting relief for that to be where it is.
Okay. And there's no expansion, correct?
That's been there, correct? The little balcony area?
Yeah, it's been there for, yes.
No, but there, you're not proposing any expansion on, on the apartment?
No.
It's a one-bedroom apartment?
Yes.
Kitchen?
Yes.
One bathroom?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
You might want to qualify me because some of these questions that are being asked, I can also comment on.
Yeah, I, I wanted, I, I was kind of wait, holding you off for a second there. I, I wanted to get as much information out of the, the applicant as I could, you know, because normally, you know, to get the background on it, he, he would have it, Mr. Higgins.
Yes.
I, I do know, I do understand you have a lot of that, the, the information that we're seeking.
Yes, yes.
But, okay, Mr. Higgins, would you give us a, your qualification?
I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, I've been licensed for over 40 years, I've testified before this board on numerous occasions as an expert in the field of planning as well as other boards throughout the state.
We accept your credentials and you are here testifying as a planner, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Sure. Okay, yes. Just one, one comment with regard to the deck. It's about 40 square feet of that deck is what actually encroaches into the front yard.
Okay.
And the front yard is over 16,000 square feet in area.
Now, Jennifer, am I correct, they need relief for that?
Yeah.
Okay. But they, they would need relief for the whole thing, but they would need front yard?
Right, which is what Charlie was just talking about, that it's existing and that just to kind of, you know, he's here to kind of clean up the record and clean up his file. And so that's something that if the board is going to act favorably on the application should be included so that he doesn't have any issues with that moving forward.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Higgins?
Does the board have any more questions for the applicant?
Board, do you all have any further questions?
Well, you're going to talk about the pole barn, right?
Yeah, that's, I want to cover, I want to get the apartment out of the way first.
Okay.
Any questions on the apartment?
No.
Professionals, y'all, y'all good?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Now we'll go to the pole barn. Okay, you stated that this was for your RV?
Yes.
And a couple of tractors?
Yes.
Okay. Jennifer?
So the pole barn then increases the coverage on the property, the total lot coverage and the building coverage, as well as it's encroaching into the front yard setback. So based on the plans, and I would ask you, the plans say that the barn is 21...
Fifty, fifty.
21.3 feet in height?
Uh, yes.
So the 22-foot setback off of the side lot line, the required setback for an accessory structure is the height of the structure. So that is the height, the 21.3?
90% sure, yes.
So the only thing I would say is it encroaches in the front yard setback along West Farms Road. This lot is atypical in that it is way wider than it is deep. Usually we don't see lots like that, we see them that are deeper or even like bowling alley-esque where they're narrow and very, very deep. So, you know, it's 22 feet from the rear property line, which is compliant, again, because it's a 21-foot, 21.3-foot tall structure. I would submit you're basically 40, almost 43 feet from West Farms Road where 50 feet is required. Personally, and, and I don't mean to speak for any neighbors, but I would rather the board grant relief in the rear than along the road. This is an accessory structure, I would ra, I would like to see it moved back the seven feet, plus or minus, seven and change, 7.2 feet, and encroach a little bit into the rear yard and get it off the road because this is an accessory structure. That would be my recommendation.
What about moving it towards the house a little bit too?
If you move it towards the house, you have a little bit more area in the back.
That's what I'm saying.
So if you, I, I mean, I don't know why it's so far away from the house, but-
On paper, it looks-
It looks very far from the house, yes.
But when you're actually in the house, it doesn't.
Um, but if you move it a couple feet to the west, you have a little bit more room to the back, but I would like to see, I, I have no problem with the pole barn, I would prefer to see a pole barn than an RV and other kinds of equipment out in the yard. I think it's a better alternative to have it in a structure aesthetically, but I would like to see the front yard setback honored because West Farms Road is becoming more heavily traveled as we get, you know, more development, so it's no longer that rural, rural road that it once was. And so, you know, from a aesthetic and from a planning point of view, keeping that front yard setback would be preferred. Um, and behind them is not a residence, really, so it's-
No, it's a ser, what is that?
Right.
A service center?
It's a house of worship. So they have a big, big piece of property back there. So I personally would rather see the barn encroached in the back, um, because it's really not going to impact the resident and it would be aesthetically more consistent to keep that 50 feet along the front. But other than that, I have no issue with the barn and I don't even have an issue with the coverage because if you look at the, the, the site, although there are a lot of structures on the site, it's not overdeveloped, in my opinion. So I don't have a problem with the coverage, I would just like to see that front yard setback honored, that's all.
And just, just for the record, I agree with Jennifer, in fact, I discussed this very aspect of moving the pole barn back, barn back with the applicant's engineer this afternoon. We decided to, to bring it to the board and let the board decide what they felt was best.
Well, you know, I, I know the height is from that back, you know, the, the height of the building is your setback. I, I would like to see, see it moved a little bit up towards the house, you know, a, at least give a little bit more from the residential, but not only that, if you look at the property line for the residential, it, it kind of zigzags there at the back. It, it comes down and then it does a jog right there, but if you could get past, if, if you were to take that line and just come straight down, get past that, I think you, you would give it-
It would affect the trees.
You, you follow what I'm saying?
I'd have to take at least eight down.
There's definitely trees there, so I, I would be cautious of, I, I really would not like them to see, to see trees taken down.
I would have to take one down. One thing that could be done is you could possibly move it to the west and make it somewhat diac, tilt it a little bit so that it's not perpendicular to the side property line. I think if you did that, you could save the trees and still have the adequate access and no, no front yard setback variance.
And I would be more than happy to work with Mr. Higgins if the board were to act affirmatively on the application to make sure that we do honor that front yard setback and we put it in such a way as to not require the removal of specific number of trees. There is a nice buffer that the applicant does have between that rear property and I'd like him to be able to keep that because are all those trees on your property or are they on the?
Uh, good portions on our property, yeah.
Good portions on our property, yes.
So, you know, I would like to see that saved, you know, because they are pretty significantly sized trees. But I do think that there is an opportunity in the cleared area in this portion of his lot that we could make that pole barn work.
Yeah.
To where the board would be happy and the applicant would be happy.
If you look at A8, it looks as if you can rotate the pole barn and move it further to the west and not disturb any trees.
Agreed.
Correct. Okay, my other question is that fence that's there, is that your fence or is that your neighbor's fence? Y'all have an agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Question?
Okay, yes, sir.
So with all of what the planner is talking about and you're a planner, you can do that?
Yes. Oh, yeah, I'm flexible.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir, Charles.
So you are asking for relief of the lot coverage with the pole barn. Are there any existing drainage concerns or complaints within your neighbors in terms of the current lot rating or anything like that?
No.
Should the board roof favorably, would you have an issue with providing or having your engineer provide like a grading plan showing that any roof leaders will either be directed away from the adjacent properties or into maybe like a rain garden system and then all overflow would go to the public right of way?
I'll work with you.
Okay.
Whatever needs to be done.
Okay. We do on typical applications like this require right-of-way dedication to try to become more in conformance with the right-of-ways for the master plan. What I would suggest for this application is a roadway easement so that way you're not impacting any of your setbacks along the frontage there. Would you have any issue with dedicating a roadway easement eight and a half foot wide to match the master plan?
Uh, no.
Okay, all right. And then we had some, just some claravol call comments regarding updating the zoning table, showing the two-hundred-foot radius on the key map on the plans, showing any trees to be removed. You said that there's possibly one to be removed. You can show that on the plan.
Yes.
And then just one thing I want to get on the record, that the pole barn is just for your residential use. There's no commercial component, no landscaping or anything like that. And then as far as access, how's that access from the residential portion or?
I was just going to leave the grass because the campers only come out six times a year.
Okay.
And then the tractors, they don't care what's on.
Now, is that going to be, you're going to take it behind and come out your main driveway? Or are you going to be taking it off of West Farms Road there?
Right off of West Farms Road.
You know, I would think maybe you should discuss with the board. I don't know that they'd necessarily be opposed to a gravel driveway to West Farms Road there, something substantial. So if you do have vehicles coming in and out of there, you're not getting rutting and tracking a material onto West Farms Road. You know, but I would leave that up to the, you know, the board's discretion whether or not, you know, that would be a requirement of any approval.
What would fire say?
They would probably say you need twenty foot wide and it needs to support some type of fire vehicle. I mean, you're fifty foot from the public right of way. They might not require, they could probably park it there and spray. But I think.
I don't see why, if it's just a camper and then tractors, I don't see why we need any driveway.
Yeah, I might disagree with the fire bureau. I think they, being how close it is to the road, I don't think they would require any driveway requirements. But I would think you would just want to work with the fire bureau if they do have any comments.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, any other?
I just have one more point of clarification. I think you said it before, but there's no commercial activities going on on the property now or in the future. I'm just going to ask that adjustment, gather that in the resolution because, correct. This is the type of property that hopefully you're not, your family will own it for another fifty-three years. But when this hits the market ever, I'm going to have every contractor wanting to move in here and take up a garage, so.
Yeah, it's residential use only. Okay. No questions from the board?
No.
Okay. Can I have a motion to open to public? Motion by Mr. Massa? Seconded by Mr. Moretti, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Anyone in the audience wish to come forward, ask questions or make a comment, please come forward.
He can stand at the microphone.
Good morning.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sure. Yes, I do. I'm Rao Andevolu. I live in nineteen Legacy Court in Frehold. I'm one of the members of the House of Worship that we were talking about earlier. We are good neighbors of the Barklaws and Barklaws have been our excellent neighbors. And we really don't mind them moving a little closer to us.
Okay. Can you just, can you just spell your name out again for the board just for the record?
Sure. Rao, first name R-A-O, last name A-N-D-A-V-O-L-U.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience wish to come forward, ask questions or make a comment? Seeing none?
Motion to close.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell to close.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Higgins, I'm going to ask Mr. Higgins if he would like to do a summation, you know, based on.
Well, basically, I think between Jennifer and I, we've discussed the benefits of this application and that there is no substantial detriment. A couple of things just to add is that the apartment currently is occupied by a seventy-year-old township resident. He was a township resident before he moved to the apartment. And one of the benefits of an apartment such as this is it allows people that live in a community who can no longer afford their single-family house to relocate within the community. I've had a number of applications, not in HALE but in other communities where this type of situation is very beneficial. And I think that's something that the board could utilize in terms of the positive, the special reasons for the granting of the apartment variance. And as far as the coverage goes, again, I agree with Jennifer. I don't think there's anything that's about the coverage that is really offensive. And when you have so much open space surrounding the site, it's actually not going to look as if the coverage is going to be twenty-three percent or fourteen percent for the building. It's going to look like it's much less. And the other point is this is a one-acre site. You have the AREE one zone and a conventional lot in the AREE one zone requires coverages that are consistent with what's being proposed here. If this were an AREE one site, it wouldn't require a variance. So I don't see any substantial detriment and I think the application makes sense.
Okay. Professionals?
I have nothing to add.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Massa?
I'd like to second the motion with the understanding that Mr. Higgins and Mrs. Beam will get together regard to the setback and give them whatever they need.
Okay. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Massa?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orosko?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Based on testimony provided on the record, based on the amount of years that this has been owned by the family, based on the amount of years that it's been a rental apartment by moving the building, bringing it more into compliance as far as the front yard, I have no objection and my vote is yes. Good luck.
Motion carries, thank you.
Good luck. The next case on the agenda, BA fourteen oh seven, A two, Tal Holdings one LLC, Tal Holdings two LLC. Use variance, bulk variance and minor subdivision. Application to Tal one LLC, Tal Holdings two LLC. As applicant and owner seeking a minor subdivision approval to subdivide existing lot thirty-four, create two new proposed lots. The entire residential apartment and business complex to remain on proposed lot thirty-four oh one and the remaining portion of existing lot thirty-four located in the AREE two zone will be contained within proposed lot thirty-four oh two, which will be a flag lot utilizing a thirty-foot wide by two-hundred-and-ninety-one foot long swath along the northern property line of existing lot, which will provide future driveway access from Brickyard Road for a proposed. Guys, 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 we're in session. Proposed single-family dwelling with septic system. This remaining southern portion of lot thirty-two is to remain for proposed single-family dwelling with septic. The applicant is also seeking a use variance, bulk variance and a design waiver approval for this application on premises known as block one seventy-five, lots thirty-two and thirty-four at the intersection of State Route, Highway thirty-three Business and Brickyard Road. Expiration date, June eleventh, two thousand nineteen.
Well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board member Stephen M. Hambro, H-A-M-B-R-O. Hambro Mitchell's a firm in Dayton, New Jersey, South Brunswick. I just wanted to, and we're representing the applicant, TAL Holdings one and TAL Holdings two. Just wanted to confirm, we previously sent the notices and affidavits to Ms. Robano?
Everything was in order.
Okay, so I just wanted. Thank you. Thank you. Just give a brief, I'll give a brief introduction to the application. This is two lots, two existing lots, and we're requesting a minor subdivision and lot consolidation. Minor subdivision, the big lot is lot thirty-four, which is on the corner of Brickyard and thirty-three. The front, which is the address of nine fifty-three Route thirty-three, has an existing commercial uses on it. And above the commercial retail uses are two apartments. Those, this site received use variance approval predominantly, well, because of the existence of those non-conforming pre-existing apartment units up above the commercial. And that was back in twenty fifteen, January twenty fifteen, there was an application to the board. My clients purchased the property in the end of twenty thirteen. Twenty fourteen began cleaning up, getting permits. I know there were some comments in some of the professionals' reports concerning or asking questions about the tree removal and related permits and whether they did get those. Resolution number fifteen dash one, case number fourteen dash oh seven, which is dated January twelfth, twenty fifteen. And that resolution on page six, it references that the property had formerly been in use as a motorcycle shop on the first floor and two residential apartments on the second floor. And then the applicant obtained all necessary municipal permits, which enabled him to begin upgrading the site, including but not limited to tree removal permits. So that was answering that question. Electrical permits, fence permits, plumbing permits and tenant-fit-out permits. So I just wanted to note that for the record that there was a previous approval and previous tree permits that had been issued. So that was.
Those tree permits, they weren't issued for the existing lot down below.
Well, I'll ask my client to confirm that.
Okay, let's swear everybody in that's going to testify.
I do. Michael Geller, G-E-L-L-E-R. Engineer.
Oh, Tom LaBrow, L-L-B-R-O-W.
And James Miller, M-I-L-L-E-R. I'm a planner.
Okay. So that was for lot thirty-four that that approval was obtained for the use variance and the site plan in twenty fifteen, beginning of twenty fifteen. Came back in again and got a pole barn and an enclosure in the front. There's a, I'll have Mr. Geller point these items out. But because of the fact that there was an existing, you know, we're talking a D two, you guys heard the D two earlier tonight for an expansion of a non-conform or intensification of a non-conforming or previously granted use variance. So anytime you touch a site where there's been a use variance that's been granted previously, you got to come back to the board, obviously, for another use variance or a D two use variance. So that's why we're here this evening for and with respect to lot thirty-four because we're putting in a lot line or requesting that we be allowed to put in a lot line to separate the larger lot thirty-four into two. Thirty-four oh one, which you can see in the front, accessing from lot, from Route thirty-three and the existing commercial uses. And then the rear portion to be six and a half acres for residential agricultural use. That residential agricultural use is accessed or planned to be accessed from Brickyard Road. And what we're proposing is to take a driveway from a portion of lot thirty-two, thirty feet wide so as to gain access to lot thirty-four point oh one, the rear portion of that for the residential use.
Okay, which one is lot thirty-two oh one?
That's.
I can't read these.
That's the new residential lot.
What's that on the bottom?
That's the proposed residential lot on Brickyard Road.
Okay.
One that has a driveway next to it.
Okay, now, the back lot is?
Thirty-four point oh two.
Thirty-four point oh two. Now what is the form?
That is it. That is the back lot.
How come you're suppo, okay. I'm lost, Dan.
You know what, let me do this.
It's not showing the whole thing. That image, that image is not showing the whole thing. It's only showing the front portion of it.
When you refer to the back lot, you're referring to the lot that is on top of thirty-two.
Correct.
Is that correct? That would be thirty-four oh one.
You know, let me do this.
Okay, hang on.
I'm going to let, because I'm less articulate in these matters than our engineer. So I'm going to let our engineer move forward with the testimony. So basically what we're doing is dividing lot thirty-four, which is a nine-acre, nine-plus acre lot, which extends from Route thirty-three, that large triangle you see in the back that's existing one lot, thirty-four. We're putting in a line in it to separate, that's to allow the back portion to be used for residential to the right of where that pointer is right now. Okay? So I'm going to let Mr. Geller, if that's okay, I'll let him explain it. He's a little bit more articulate than I when it comes to hearing issues.
All right. If you would just qualify Mr. Geller, he's been here many times, but the chair would like to have that down.
Surely, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Michael Geller. I'm a professional engineer and also a professional planner. I'll be testifying tonight as a professional engineer. I have forty, close to forty-four years of experience in the fields of engineering and planning. I had served as the HALE engineer in the early eighties, the Lacy Township engineer in the nineteen nineties and two thousands. And I've testified before scores of boards in the capacity of engineer throughout the state.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you. Okay. I'll walk the board through what we're doing. I'd like them to mark a couple of exhibits. We may?
All right, A nine is your next number, Mike? A nine.
A nine is the actual minor subdivision map that was submitted. I believe it's in the exhibit list as A, is it seven? It's the minor subdivision, but I've marked a few things on it that I wanted to enter into the record that I will describe in a moment.
Um, minor subdivision plans, A six. A six was the minor subdivision plan?
A ten is the site plan that was approved by the board in two thousand sixteen. It's entitled preliminary and final major site plan. It's the landscape and lighting plan. It's dated. The last division date is October twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen. And I just brought that to show the board what was approved most recently. That I'll describe in a moment as well. Now, the property is identified, there's two parts, there's two lots. There's Lot Thirty-four that the attorney just described, which is the portion at the northwest corner of Route Thirty-three, which runs north of east and west, but on the left side of the plan, and Brickyard Road. And that is identified as nine fifty-three State Highway Thirty-three. It's, the property has a nine-point-two-five acre area, has about three hundred and ten feet of frontage on Route Nine, and about two hundred and seventy feet of frontage on Brickyard Road. Oh yeah, Route Thirty-three, I'm sorry. This property, as you remember from past hearings, is awkwardly shaped. It's, has a commercial aspect that's in the HD-two zone, and then it's very long and extends back into the ARE-two zone. The zone boundary is depicted on the subdivision plan. The, there's a lot of narrow parts that makes the access to the rear part of the property rather difficult. As I said, the property is split-zoned, the highway development zone is to the left or the southerly portion of the plan, and the ARE-two zone is to the right or the northerly portion of the project. In January two thousand fifteen, when there was an existing building here that has about three thousand four hundred and fifty square feet, the board granted approval to continue the use of that building for the first floor for three businesses, as well as the two residential units who are on the second floor. The variance that was approved was for the residential aspect, which is not a permitted use in the HD-two zone. There were several other site improvements that were done, formal parking areas, parking areas for the residential units.
Mike, Mike, let me, let me ask you, you made a statement, three businesses?
Yeah, there were three separate businesses there. At that time, it was a.
Motorcycle shop.
A hardscape business and a kitchen business.
Okay.
All on the first floor.
But all, all owned by the same owner?
At that time, they were, yes, they're all, the building is owned by one owner.
No, I might, but all the businesses were?
At that time, I believe they were, yes.
That's not, that's not completely accurate.
I, that's why I'm asking these questions.
Yeah, no, they were different entities. They were different entities.
Okay, I, I would have to go back to the resolution. Okay, continue.
At the same time, there were fenced areas for yard areas and storage containers that were also shown on that plan, and there was a fenced area to the north that was a yard area for the contracting business associated with the commercial use. From the, approximately the HD-two zone boundary, there's a white vinyl fence, and from there to the north was entirely approved as an farming operation, which was associated with the business on the same lot, but was a separate operation. In October two thousand sixteen, the plan that I just marked as A-ten was approved, and that called, there was a lot of outside material and equipment that the owner wanted to get inside storage. He proposed a four thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven square foot storage building to the west of the existing thirty-four hundred and fifty feet, square foot building, as well as an eight hundred and fifty foot storage building within the yard area of the site. And that was to get certain equipment and materials that needed to be stored inside that were currently at that time outside. There were other site improvements also proposed. There was a relocation of a well that was in the area of the footprint of the building that was relocated closer to Route Thirty-three. There was landscaping that is shown on the plan. There was a relocation of a dumpster, and there was a formal approval of a fenced-in container area in the Brickyard Road frontage of the site adjacent to the residential adjacent lot. That was the improvements that were approved at that time.
There was also a farmland buffer, correct?
There was a farmland buffer that still exists to this day. It's fifty feet in width, but only thirty foot is the planted buffer, and twenty foot was allowed to be used for a driveway for access to the rear in recognition of the narrowness of the lot. And the rear portion that's not shown on this particular plan, but shows on the subdivision plan, continued to be the farmland portion of the property. Now, Lot Thirty-two existing is the yellow line that goes across the little flag portion of Lot Thirty-four oh-two, proposed lot, is the existing Lot Thirty-two. Now, Lot Thirty-two is located on the westerly side of Brickyard Road, about six hundred feet north of Route Thirty-three. This is situated entirely in the ARE-two, rural agricultural rural estate zone with a minimum of two acres for development. This site has zero-point-nine-nine acres, and it has a lot width of two hundred and nineteen-point-two-three feet, and a lot depth of one hundred and ninety-seven-point-four-one feet. Two hundred feet is required for each of those bulk requirements. This lot, as it is today, would be an existing residential lot of record, which allows development of that lot, as long as it has forty thousand square feet, without a zoning board approval. If we were developing that, it is, but we are proposing to change that lot line. We're here for that approval from this board.
So that, that makes it an undersized lot, correct?
Yes, it's an existing undersized lot of record. Your ordinance does allow provisions if it was to be developed as is, without a zoning board, but we're changing the lot line, so we have to get your approval for that.
So you're lowering even more the square footage, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
This property is currently vacant, it's partially wooded. I think your engineer cited the northerly and southerly sidelines. The center area had a prior use on it. The applicant will testify that he has not cleared, he's only cleaned up, and I, at the time that he was developing Lot Thirty-four, he owned that lot, he was using that driveway for access to the rear portion of Lot Thirty-four. The New Jersey Geo-Web has also identified areas of wetlands on the rear portion of Lot Thirty-four. I want to inform the board that in February, we found an application for an LOI for absence. We did field investigations. There were no wetlands found to be present, and there's currently an application at DEP pending for the LOI absence determination. I believe the planning board was copied and the municipal clerk and required entities were copied with the application.
So you're saying there are no wetlands?
There's no wetlands on it. We need a formal verification of that from DEP, and on Lot Thirty-two, there are no wetlands.
Charles?
Mike, was there any report from an environmental professional or any thing, you know, you said you submitted an application to DEP, and it's on the record with the clerk. As far as I know, this board hasn't received or any of its professionals, like a, a report from an environmental professional saying lack or presence thereof of wetlands. Do you have any?
We're waiting, we're waiting for the determination from the DEP, but there was a report.
But that was a condition of a prior approval.
Exactly, that's what I'm, that's where I'm going.
And this is years ago. So now, all of a sudden, you're back for something else, and now you decide to submit to the DEP. This was something that should have been done when this was approved years ago.
Prior application. That was.
Now we're still waiting.
It was a condition of the prior application.
It was my understanding that the approval of the wetlands LOI was if the greenhouses that were proposed at that time were proposed, we'd have to get the rear area determined to be wetlands.
Exactly, but that was a prior application, and it hasn't been done.
The applicant was allowed to develop everything. He has certificates of occupancy, and everything for the front portion of the site was developed in accordance with the approvals. And now, only if the greenhouses were gonna be built, is my understanding is that.
No, that's, that wasn't the condition of the approval.
It was a condition of your prior approval, to get a presence-absence LOI. That was a condition of your prior approval. So, yes, great, you got COs, and perhaps that's on us. However, this is something that should have been done years ago, and here we are, now you're asking for more on the site, and the board is still waiting for things that they asked for previously.
Mr. Geller, you're gonna have to get them. There's no doubt about it.
Yeah, we're gonna get them.
Okay, well, then the argument's over.
There's no argument.
Well, it doesn't sound like you wanna get them.
No, he's, he's tied for them now. The issue that I have, Tom, is that, you know, this application has been before the board multiple times. This is like the third time, so it was a condition of a prior approval. My guess is, had they not wanted something new, would they have gone and gotten the information? I don't know.
Well, not only that, Jennifer, they, they just have testimony that they used access off of Brickyard Road.
Well, that's, that's.
Which previ, previous.
We denied that.
We denied that.
We told them, the access off Brickyard Road was prohibited.
Exactly.
Correct.
And now, we're, we're hearing that they're using that lot. We tried to get that lot to be combined into the previous application.
I remember that specifically, yes. It says, right here in the resolution number fifteen dash one, dated January twelfth, two thousand fifteen, on page thirteen, condition, applicant agrees to obtain an NJDEPLOI determination regarding possible wetlands near the center of the property, and no construction of any kind is permitted until that's done. But that was a condition of approval in two thousand fifteen, and here we are in two thousand nineteen, and they just submitted for it because now we're back for something else.
So, so you're saying that it's pending?
Well, they submitted it and it's pending. My stipulation is that it should have been done already.
Right, I mean, how can we proceed without it?
So, and then what I'll add to that, Mr. O'Donnell, is the map wetlands on the DEP, it does show pretty much along a good portion of existing Lot Thirty-four, proposed Lot Thirty-four oh-two, is mapped as wetlands. They're proposing a flag lot with a driveway that's gonna go right through that wetlands, so not only, if there is wetlands there, they're gonna have to get some type of approval from DEP, a general permit for constructing a new driveway within wetlands. So that's another wrinkle to the situation. It's not just an LOI, it's a potential general permit from DEP as well.
Well, my experience in the last twenty years over there is that floods all the time. That road's always flooded, and there's a, some kind of drain set up to, on the opposite side, but it never seems to be working. I was there Saturday, and it was still giant puddles all over, so it's not really draining.
And then another, you know, item I just wanna point out, and Mike kinda alluded it to it, right now, the existing Lot Thirty-two does have a lot area greater than forty thousand square feet. The proposed Lot Thirty-two oh-one, and I apologize, we actually missed this in our letter, it's less than forty thousand square feet. They're proposing a septic system. They would need a separate variance for that, because any site not serviced by public sewer less than forty thousand square feet needs a variance, and I believe it's also subject to ARE-two zoning requirements, which doesn't really change this, 'cause this is, I believe, ARE-two to begin with. Is it ARE-one, so it would be subject to the ARE-two setback requirements, so.
Charlie, I have another question. I mean, I don't know if it's the time to bring it up, but being that I have the floor, I will. There used to be a junkyard there, a big junkyard for a lot of years. I don't mean big in size, but active. Has that land ever been, to your knowledge, remediated, or have borings done to show that there's no contamination there? 'Cause that guy that owned it never had anything to protect it, and he did all the city of Hal Township, not all, but a lot of it, towing. So he was always bringing crashed up accidents there that were leaking.
So, fortunately, I haven't had as much experience as Jack Mallon at Hal Township. If he were here, he'd probably give you a little bit more background on that. What I could say as far as the application as it stands right now, the prior application was just for Lot Thirty-four.
Right.
Um, it certainly appears to me from review of aerials, there's been some tree clearing on Lot Thirty-two. They've also put some testimony that they've used that lot for access. Some aerials that I printed out from two thousand eighteen shows that there are some like soil or material stockpiles on that lot. I don't know what kind of approvals were garnered for that. Also, the rear portion of proposed Lot Thirty-four oh-one, there wasn't anything shown on any prior site plan approvals for what was going on in that area. Some aerials that I printed out as recent as two thousand eighteen, May of two thousand eighteen, it looks like there's some expanded gravel area, some, you know, trailer or equipment type materials stored in that lot there. I don't know, you know, what prior approvals, whether that's associated with any farm use of the lot, or whether that's associated with the commercial use in the front. I think the applicant needs to provide testimony on that. You know, if it's a farm use, it might pre-exempt it, you know, under the right to farm, but if it's commercial, that's an expansion of a, you know, of a commercial use, which they got the, you know, they're, they're here for an expansion of a, of a, you know, commercial use variance, the D-two use variance. But I think they need to talk about what's on there. There was also approvals for three greenhouses. What's the status of that? Are they still looking to put those in? Is, are they removing that from the application? From our review, it certainly looks that was on proposed Lot Thirty-four oh-two.
There was also a pole barn, if I'm not mistaken.
Are they pole barns? I thought they were three large greenhouses.
No, there was greenhouses and pole barns.
I think the pole barn was within the contractor yard at the front on Route Thirty-three and Brickyard there. And the rear portion behind the existing eight-foot-high vinyl fence, deer fence that they say there, I believe that's where the three or, or four proposed greenhouses were supposed to go. So I think they also need to provide testimony on what's the status of that. Is that part of the application, are they removing it out of there? I think there's a lot that's been going on in the property that's not documented on a plan, and I think that needs to be testified to and clarified on, on the plans.
Charlie, I have one more thing. January fourteen, two thousand nineteen, the Monmouth County Board of Health gave us a report saying, prior to approval application, satisfactory soil logs need to be done on Lots Thirty-two oh-one and Thirty-four oh-two. Did we get those?
No, so.
So that has to be done.
That has to be done, and that would be typically something that would be a condition of an approval. But I think along with the concerns with the wetlands, whether you not need a general permit, I don't know how this board could approve a minor subdivision to create a lot that potentially could not have lawful access from a public right-of-way. I think the board needs to know whether or not, you know, they have sufficient approvals to actually build that driveway, you know, within that, you know, portion of the flag lot there.
Yes. Wouldn't it be better to get all this stuff clear, cleared up? I, I mean, with things from two thousand fifteen that I'm hearing about? Wouldn't it be better to get this all done before, so this way we, before we, you, you go forward?
Yes, I was just waiting for the board and your professionals to finish their discussion.
Yeah, sorry, keep it over there. Really?
So, and I just wanted to ask a question. The area which you talked about in terms of the autos and the storage, you're talking about Lot Thirty-two, correct?
I believe so, yeah.
The one off of Brickyard?
Thirty-two and up, up top of the hill, on top of the hill. It'd be your new lot proposal, Thirty-four oh-one also.
So, so what you're saying is that there was, the auto wrecking yard or storage yard was also part of Lot Thirty-four?
Thirty-four, yes.
Which, I mean, that, that came before the board and got two approvals previously. I just wanna point that out.
I understand that.
Okay.
I, I do understand that. But Thirty-two was a junkyard, but it, it carried over into Thirty-four, but I don't think it carried over as much. But the, the other thing is, is if, if you're gonna come back, you better address the farmland buffers. You're gonna be required to have a lot of farmland buffer here. Number one, the access driveway into the back flag lot, Thirty-four oh-two?
Right.
That has to be a farmland buffer if that's gonna be maintained a farm. You, and an access driveway can't be considered part of a farmland buffer, period. I know they granted, which I, I voted no, because, because of that. So, you know, you, you've got to address that. These other areas are gonna have to have that farmland buffer for your farm and also the farm up above you. Because now you're really getting into an active farm.
Well, yeah, so, let me, I'll just go back. Obviously, there are a number of issues, and we're not gonna make headway tonight, I can tell right now. So, we're gonna not withdraw the application, but request that we be given time to address some of these issues. In particular, and I'm just gonna read, you know, going back to the two thousand fifteen one, which talks about the applicant agrees to obtain from NJDUP an LOI determination regarding possible wetlands near the center of the property, and no construction of any kind is permitted in that until said determination is obtained. So that area that we're talking about is in that, yes, in that larger portion, not the area where we developed in the front of the property. So I just wanna point that out. We'll go back, we'll get the LOI, get, or the, the determination in terms of the wetland. get, or the, the determination in terms of the wetlands. There was something you wanted to point to that as well, Mike. I'm sorry.
Oh, the health department issued a subsequent report to the January report that we received from the town dated March 5, 2019, that soil logs at the property have been conducted, and that the site is suitable for the installation of subsurface sewage disposal. That was Chris R. Liberto on March 5, 2019.
Can you just submit those soil logs to the board?
Sure.
And the correspondence, because we don't have that.
Oh, okay.
I thought that was, I believe that was part of what came from, from Eileen.
And then, Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify it one more time. So the prior plans for lot 34, they didn't show anything apart from the four greenhouses beyond the ARE1 zone line, where it splits from HD1 to ARE1? ARE2, sorry, I apologize. They're, from aerials, it looks like there has been development of that back portion of the lot. I think that needs to be depicted on the plan, you know, so for the board's consideration. They've shown some limits of like, what looks like a gravel driveway. From the areas that I looked at, it's certainly a lot larger than what's shown on there, and there's also a lot of other stuff that's being stored there. I think that needs to be accurately depicted for the board's consideration, whether, you know, they're going to weigh that in their consideration for the minor subdivision in, you know, various, you know, approvals. So I think that needs to be clarified on there and just clear-
Yes. So, so those are, well, as far as the greenhouses, they were not built, and we don't intend to build them. That's correct?
That is correct.
Okay. But, but as it sits right now, that, that whole big section is still part of 34, correct?
The rear portion?
Yes.
Yeah, the whole lot is 34.
Okay, 34, that was a condition of the approval to have the LOI, period. That's 34. I don't care if the greenhouses are built or not. It's still part. And if you read the resolution, it says before any construction, which Jennifer alluded to, that's on us. But right now, before anything is going forward, we need the LOI. You know, that's done.
I would recommend, Mr. Chair, that, you know, obviously, and I don't mean to speak for you, you're obviously asking it to be carried to a subsequent date, correct?
Yes.
So I would recommend that when you guys are gearing up to come back, that perhaps we have a technical review meeting with myself, Charlie, and Ron, and Matt, with your professional team before we come back here. That way, we can vet out any of these issues ahead of time.
That makes perfect sense.
And not have to have these conversations in public.
Jennifer, I'd like you to take into consideration, when you do that, that is a good idea about that junkyard.
I agree. I will take care of it, yes.
Because they're gonna have wells there.
We're, we'll be on it, yep.
Okay, thank you.
But I just think that it'd be great to have that, so that way, any issues that Charlie and I have, or any input that Matt has, you'll have that ahead of time before you come back to the, to the board. And a lot of times, we can resolve a lot of issues-
I absolutely agree. I absolutely agree. Okay. I'm not going to parse the LOI issue.
Okay.
But we'll address that, and we'll come back. We'll have the meeting. We'll set it up. We'll submit the plans. We'll do the environmentals that we were talking about. I'll talk to my clients about doing maybe a phase one for that lot 32, make sure that we have, that there's no issues there.
Okay. It, it, why don't we set up a, why don't we move them to another meeting for scheduling purposes only? Because I have no idea how long this is going to take.
Well, I, I think there are a number of issues that we can address. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in on there.
Mr. Tropley.
Right. July 8 has nothing on it right now. July 22 is one application.
Mike, how much, how long do you think it's going to take for you to get information back from the DEP?
Well, it's been three months already that we've been in, but I can't, I'm not going to start predicting that.
But, I mean, like, a month or two, you think?
If we nag them?
Yeah.
Maybe. I think July 8 might be doable, or the 22nd.
That would go for no longer.
Okay. So, so just to point out one other issue, not issue, but to address one of the issues that's been raised about the junkyard or the car storage area. At the time that my client purchased the property, there was in fact a phase one that was done, and he would not, if there was a contamination issue that came up on the phase one, he would not have purchased the property at that point in time or required that it be remediated.
Do you have the reports?
Yes, we'll provide those reports to your professionals.
Do you have, do you have the phase one? Do you have the phase one?
Yeah, we have a phase one, I'm pretty sure.
That needs to be submitted.
We shall.
Can we go to July 22, just because we have seven other applications prior? I need to have them carried in and in your work again.
July 22.
Right, and we'll need an extension of time through, what would you think, August? August, August 30?
Sure.
That's where you have plenty of time for us to get together on the TRC.
Absolutely.
And we'll carry it to the-
So in terms of coordinating, as far as the TRC with Jennifer?
Jennifer, go, go through-
Yeah, go through Eileen, and she'll check our schedules.
Go through Eileen, and she'll coordinate every, everything.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay. July, July 22, correct?
Yes.
Okay, case number BA1407A2, Tal Holdings 1 LLC, Tal Holdings 2 LLC, will be carried to July 22, 2019, 7:30 PM, with no further notice. Extension of time has been granted through the end of August. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time, board members, I'm going to ask Eileen to please read in the resolution for executive session.
Whereas Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 13 of the New Jersey Revised Statutes requires that the public shall not be excluded from any meetings of a public body unless a resolution authorizing such exclusion is adopted at a public meeting. And whereas the zoning board of adjustment of the township of Howell has determined that such a closed meeting is required to discuss certain matters which are exempted from consideration with the public in attendance under New Jersey Revised Statutes 10:4-12, namely personnel. Now therefore be it resolved by the zoning board of adjustment of the township of Howell that the public shall be excluded from the next portion of this meeting, and that the zoning board of adjustment will not reconvene in public session thereafter. Be it further resolved that minutes will be kept of the meeting in closed session, and the time and circumstances under which the discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public cannot be determined at this time.
Thank you. I need a motion. Ron, we need a motion, right? It's been a while. Need a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion to go into executive.
Motion by Mr. Moretti, seconded by Mr. Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. And the zoning board will adjourn in the executive session.
No, no. Yes, right. No, and we're hoping not to, so.